Hey Brooke, can you hear us out there?
I can.
And we can hear you just fine, so I think we're live on Facebook and we're recording, so we're good to start the meeting.
Okay. I'm sorry for the delay, folks, we have a little technical trouble.
Executive session.
And yes, yes. Welcome to the October Churchill Borough Council meeting. We are going to start with our pledge of allegiance and the the presidents of our council members.
Could you roll call first? Okay, roll call. So this evening, President Jay Doran is not with us. And in the room, we have to have Kasim Klein.
Here.
Valerie Renfeller.
Here.
Matt Castillo, I'm present. Andrea Tillo.
Here.
Of course, the mayor's here, and as you've already seen online, Brooke is joining us remotely.
Here.
Thank you.
So please rise for the pledge of allegiance if you're able. So we're going to start this evening. As Alex mentioned, we had an executive session before our meeting. And now we have something special that is going to be taken care of by the mayor. So mayor, you have the floor.
If I could, real quick, just the executive session was for personnel litigation.
Oh, sorry.
No problem. Okay, just by way of information, I received a letter from one of our residents in the borough, David Bajah.
Bajah.
Bajah. Bajah, I'm sorry.
Bajah.
Actually, my wife and I were at PNC Park this summer, and we saw all these people walking all around the morning track, carrying flags from every state in the country, in America, and some from other countries. Like, what is all this going on here? Well, it's the senior Olympics. And I find out later, and probably that night, there were about 10,000 more people at that game. Then I find out from David that he participated in that and came in sixth place in his age division in the 1500 meter sprint. And I know David is one of our residents, naturally, that's on Thornbury. So Thornbury is pretty well represented there. See, my wife Patty's down here, we have a couple other residents that are on Thornbury. David's been a resident for 20 years. Practicing psychologist. Married for years, an avid gardener, also looking at the past president of the Churchill Garden Club, so if you're interested. Most recently participated in the Special Olympics, track and field. Is a devil's in magic in common. So we're hoping next year during our community days, we have a little students of participation. So maybe you could come and participate in that. And what I really liked was his quote, he says, "Be curious, keep turning toward things that you'd rather avoid. Stay connected to love, to love your family, have lots of fun, remain open to learning, especially from the young folks, and keep it in mind." And David, I have a special proclamation for you here, if you'd like to come up. This is from the Churchill Borough Officer of the Council Mayor. It's a proclamation honoring David Bajah. Whereas Churchill Borough resident for over 20 years, David Bajah recently participated in the 2023 National Senior Olympic, Senior Games, sorry, in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And whereas the National Senior Games is dedicated to motivating adults and lead to healthy, healthy active lifestyle. The Senior Games has over 20 sports competitions for men and women, 50 years of age and older. And it is the largest multi-sport event in the world for seniors. And whereas over 11,000 seniors participated in traditional and non-traditional Olympic events such as track and field, high jump tennis, table tennis, and bowling, just to name a few. And whereas David participated in track and field in the 1500 meter, that's .93 miles, he placed sixth place out of 18 runners in his age category, 75 to 80 years of age. And whereas David earned a ribbon for his noteworthy achievement that he proudly glued to his head every day during the Olympics. And now therefore be resolved that I, Churchill Borough Mayor Paul Gammret, do hereby recognize David Bajah for his participation in the 2013 National Senior Olympics and thank him for being an inspiration to others in our community. In witness of, in witness whereof, I have here unto cause the seal of the Borough Churchill to be affixed this ninth day of October 2023.
We appreciate the inspiration.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Do we have time to say a few words?
Yeah.
Time to say a few words?
If you would like.
David?
No pressure.
I don't know what you're getting into.
Sometimes these meetings drag on, so if you haven't got comedy, bring it up.
I did want to thank Paul, Mayor Paul, very much, and council for your invitation to invite my wife, April, and myself. I'm very pleased to be here, and heck, at my age, I'm very pleased to be anywhere, actually. I wanted to say a little, a few words about my recent experience at the Olympics, which we all know took place in Pittsburgh in July this year. And as Paul said, 11,000 people participated. And Pittsburgh is only one of two cities to have hosted the Olympics more than once. So I didn't know that, and I was very proud to be part of that. The Olympics started in 69 in Los Angeles. And at that point, it became an open invitation to any athlete or any participant 50 or over to become part of, let's say, anybody who wanted a more traditional entrance into could pick a more Olympic kind of thing like a javelin disc or track and field. Or as Paul mentioned, some really fun things like bowling and ping pong and chopboard. So I had never trained as a runner. So I, it was just totally new for me. And I chose a track and field, again, as Paul said, it's a fast sprint of a mile. And when you start, you realize how the shape you are. I was like exhausted every night that I ran on the track and went on the hills. And so in preparation, I needed a role model to inspire me. Someone who went like the wind, who broke all expectations and norms, who tore through the metaphorical stop signs of life without regret. And when I looked around, I realized I didn't need any further to look than the speeding cars on Thornbury Drive. These speedsters, in my experience, stagger the minds as they leave dogs and people diving for cover as they go to the finish line, and they do it with the bandit. These are the kind of cars that inspire, because they view a 20-mile speed limit not as a stop sign, but as a low bar to be challenged and to be exceeded. So I said, could I be, could I do better? I wonder. So long story short, hitting the side, a lot of funny things happened with this whole event. But in order to get ready for this thing, in my event, I had to be one of four top runners to qualify in any state that was sponsoring the event. So I'm very competitive. And I had missed my time, my deadline in Pennsylvania. So being the kind of person, I hate to reveal this, I started to scour the internet for the state with the highest obesity and cardiovascular rates. It was true. And I found Kentucky. And I think God or someone wanted to punish me because I sustained an injury right before I was on my way to Kentucky. So there I was, and so I ended up choosing Delaware. And day of the race, I walked up to be registered. And the woman is there and she's taking notes, and I show up and she goes, okay, David Bajah, 75 to 80 range. And then she looks and she gets this smile on her face. And she goes, sir, you only have one other competitor running. And it was a very mixed meeting. I said, so you're saying I just have to breathe and stroll and take my time and I qualify? And she said, yeah, actually, that's true. So I don't know if you can appreciate this, I was disappointed because suddenly I had gotten my participation trophy, but I hadn't done anything. And that's where things started to turn in terms of, how did I really, how did I really approach this thing? And it went from wanting to win, which is still part of me, to wanting to now do my best race no matter how many runners were running. That was really vital to me. So I really gave it my all. The guy behind me, I really don't know what happened with him. I think he died, but I'm not sure. And I wouldn't wish it. But I don't really know who my competitor was. But the point is, I ran really hard. I did my best. And to my shock, I broke the state record for Delaware. And for five days, I was like, great, damn. And then, as life has a way to humble and kick you back at your heels, day five came and I got this email. Here, sir. Upon reviewing our records, we regret to inform you that because you are not a state resident of Delaware, you must vacate your prior claim to this record. Yeah, so I begged my wife to move to Delaware immediately so I could properly keep my prize, but she relented, and I'm still very happy to be on Thornbury. The games were extraordinary. I would say the thing that moved me more than anything it was to see 90-year-old men running their hearts out in my division, yeah, I mean, in that race. It was something. I, I met an Indian man who was 92, and I talked to his grandson. He said, you know, you think it's about a race, but for my, my grandfather, he said during COVID, he's the kind of guy who learned new things on the internet that took up a new recipe. He said for him, living fully is how he does it. And this phrase is one expression of it. And then I talked to this older gentleman, I said, how was your race? He's like, fine, I'm ready for the next time. So it was pretty good. And every two years, so that was, that was pretty good. I saw a 65-year-old woman complete a hydra. I'd never seen this. I was just flabbergasted. And lastly, a woman tossing a javelin that narrowly missed her husband. It was known to be unfaithful. So the crowd buzzed whether her intent was to claim the gold or his life. We weren't sure. Just coming down to the end here, when the 90- to 100-year-olds lined up to run, I think I heard ambulances and AMT start their engines, but I wasn't sure. One other gift to me. My son and his wife flew from New York to see me run my really brief race. That is where it really meant. And at the end of the race, his wife Amelia and my wife April, they were hugging me. And my son, who's a dry observer, who was videoing, looked at me and said, Dad, you look kind of stressed the last lap. That was his feedback for all the effort I did, but if you have kids, you understand. Event was a whirlwind that I'll never forget with three lessons, and I want to leave you with this. One is the Senior Olympics for me had little to do with winning, although I was proud to take my place among, among the winners. I think the victory was finding my passion and getting my joy and putting my heart into something and really giving it my complete. And the discipline, but the love that comes from doing your best. And it could be a garden or a recipe or meeting a new friend, but that was the energy that I felt during these Olympics, and it was extremely moving. In other words, to do our best regardless of the outcome is the joy that I felt and the thing that I really took with me. Secondly, the Olympics as a whole and the hundreds I met were really a reminder to me to keep mobile, to keep moving, to connect with those we love, and to be open to those we've only met. We need that. We have our little groups, and then we start to get beyond our boundaries. And for me, I met people I would have never met. And all I could say is that camaraderie, and it didn't matter whether you did shuffleboard or a real athlete. The thing was that we were in some kind of community. And Churchill, I think we have a sense of how important that is. Lastly, the Olympics also helped me expand my view of aging. I think too often all of us can settle into a comfort zone that we cling to out of habit or, or a pattern of doing things but we know isn't enough, and that ultimately kind of deadens us, or maybe just numbs us in some way. It could be what we do every night, and we don't get that much, but you know, we don't know what else to do with ourselves. It's that kind of challenge. The challenge is, I think, this, and I put it when Paul read, to keep turning toward the change we'd rather avoid, to keep turning toward that resistance because the change we need is there. And if we push through, we could feel our own growth. Though aging, I know all of us know this, means changing and change can be disruptive. It can be frightening for any of us, regardless of age for that matter. I think we're challenged to choose changing over staying too safe in our lives, or worse, fighting the changes that are already occurring. We get old, getting older, we feel the changes, we can fight it or we can go with it, makes a big difference. And believe me, I haven't mastered that, but it's certainly my challenge. Or in conclusion, as a great pitcher Satchel Paige was to have said, age is a case of mind over matter. If you don't mind it, it don't matter. Thank you very much.
I think his words could not only go with the sports, but in anything that we do, including the volunteer that all council does for our community.
That's what I was thinking.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay. Next is the part of the meeting that was like best, which is hearing from our citizens. So we will, first of all, you have three minutes to speak, and you'd like to begin by stating your name and your address.
And if you're online, would you please raise your hand so we can promote you to panelists?
Okay. Anybody in the room have anything you'd like to share with us this evening? No?
Don't all jump up at once.
I think our former council member should actually, you know, assist me.
It's nice to be here, it's good to see you. I enjoy very much meeting.
Me too.
Just if I may, I mean, everybody knows Kevin and my wife Patty, but if you met Denny Davico, one of our residents also on our committee.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
And Denny, Denny's been real instrumental. He is always out helping us as Kevin does too with our litter pickup.
Yes.
And working in the common garden. I sent out an email that we're going to do something this weekend. Denny's there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Alex, do we have anyone online who would like to speak to us this evening?
At this point, there are no ones with, there is no one with their hand raised.
Okay, then I think we can move on. Okay, should we start with the minutes?
Absolutely. Motion to accept the meeting minutes from Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. Borough Council workshop meeting and from the Monday, September 11th, 2023, regular council meeting.
Second.
Questions? All in favor? Motion carries. All right. The treasurer's report is next.
Oh, mayor's report.
I'm sorry, I'm
I'm ready.
Jay must have given that to me because of, please, Paul, I'm, I'm sorry.
Thank you, my president. Chief Ronald Rattley has reported to me that there were no significant incidents during the month of September 2023. Our officers handled a total of 916 events. This will be 10,978 to date, consisting of both calls for service and proactive patrol engagements and details, resulting in five arrests. The department's five police vehicles logged a total of 4,496 miles. And that's 861 miles more than last month. Give us a total of 41,482 for the year, and I'm saying, I'm thinking that that additional 861 is because we have this new car online. The ticket summary for the month of September 23 was 39, zero traffic tickets, five parking tickets, and 34 traffic tickets. In an effort to promote a sacred intersection at the request of the borough, Endai has just recently made changes in the roadway, roadway lane designations on Buella Road and Lewin Lane. Motorists are advised that the right turn lane was designated, I'm sorry, that was, that was designated on Buella Road Southbound has been eliminated and reduced to a single travel lane. All southbound traffic continuing toward Turrcreek or turning right off of Lewin Lane will now be made from a single southbound lane. Temporarily, safety cones have been placed on the former right turn lanes until Endai can paint the necessary roadway markings to clearly indicate that the lane is no longer to be used. Signage has also been installed along with a portable electric sign alerting motorists of the change in the traffic patterns. Halloween Trick or Treat will be held on Tuesday, October 31st, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Residents are reminded to have your home and walkways well lit and clear of all debris to help ensure the safety of the trick or treaters. The borough officers have glow-in-dark, glow-in-dark wristbands for each charge for anyone interested in obtaining one for themselves or their child.
That's great.
When, when traveling on the roadways to Borough or anywhere that's that evening, please reduce your speed and keep alert and a watchful eye for pedestrians at all times. Officers and fire department personnel will be on patrol throughout our neighborhood as well. Details and other related statistics concerning the police department during the month of September 23 are reported on attached police department reports. And the wristbands, there's, there's things.
Wondered, that's awesome. That's awesome. I'd wonder.
That's what I gotta grab for myself.
Yeah.
So maybe we can get that on the, on our Facebook page as well if they are available.
Maybe for the sense.
Yeah, or that sense.
We, we were planning on having the open house when Representative Salisbury's here.
Oh, yeah.
And that was happening uh, right before, but now they got changed, so we're looking through processes. So yeah, that was something that, that's why it hasn't been done yet. Because we're trying to finalize.
Madam Vice, Madam Vice President, I would make a motion to accept the mayor's report.
Second, I can questions, comments, all in favor? Aye, aye. Motion carries. May I?
Yes. Madam President, I motion to accept the treasurer's report for September 30th, 2023, and motion to direct the finance officer to pay the bills for the Borough of Churchill accrues since September 11th, 2023.
Second.
Questions? Comments? I will say the larger bills, like we always do.
Okay.
There are larger bills that are over $10,000 or $5,000, is what we usually do. OP Connect, which is three electric vehicle charging stations for six total ports, is $20,967. Churchill Volunteer Fire Co. is $20,430.62. Big Liotti Landscape and Construction is $16,241.12. And Catacor Energy and Lighting, $5,989.32.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that, and we haven't, we haven't been, we've been doing the motion again, and just, no, no, except this.
We can call for the vote unless there's any other discussion. I would just add for
I have a, I do have a question, I'm sorry. Where are the ports going exactly?
So if you're in the parking lot this evening, we might be able to now see the white paint. As you know, construction projects require call before you dig. And on the angle side, you'll see there are circles on the lot facing the Verizon Tower. There'll be kind of white where the yellow line is so that both parking spaces can be accommodated by that. Next Monday, they'll start construction. Duquesne Light will go first, bringing the transformer up on the pole. And then Schulteis, I think, is the contractor, is going to be here. So actually, we have two building permits. One is for that project and the other is for the bathrooms, locker rooms that you see.
Not putting any EV ports over there?
Not right now, not with this grant, and not with this proposal.
Got it. Wow, that's exciting news. We're, so we're excited about that. Okay.
So I just wanted to add too, that final payment that was read for the LED lighting upgrade, so you know, a good portion of that will be coming back to the borough right after.
So what, what they did was
A big part of that project was offset by grant funding, right?
Yeah, actually, this was one, it was like a coupon. So all we're paying is about 20% or 25% of the total cost. It was about a $40,000 project between all the buildings, these, those buildings, including the fire station or the fire company's house right out there, and the buildings in our building. So it was about a $48,000 project, and we were paying like 10, and so we already had the down payment, and this was the take care of the rest.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's amazing.
What we really hope is we can see the difference, not only in the lighting, well, as you can see this, we used our chandeliers, but also in the electric bills, where we hope to see reduced costs for lighting.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Now, where is the windows? Okay. To number seven.
Are we having a vote? All in favor?
Oh, sorry. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All right.
Madam Vice President, I would motion to adopt Resolution 4577 of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, authorizing a grant application to be made to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, for the local share statewide grant program for a new school zone safety signs on Greensburg Pike at Woodland Hills High.
Second. Any questions, comments?
I think, yeah, I think we covered this, you know, fairly well before, and I know there's some talk of working with the school district to, you know, see depending on what the grant funding is and what the total cost is going to be, whether there's any opportunity to match some of that, but certainly, you know, good upgrade and hopefully we'll get some grant funding to help with that.
Yeah, the goal would be to try to complete it before the start of the school year next year, so hopefully it makes a spot in place for us.
Yeah, great. Well, safety is what we're about, so glad to meet you guys. Okay. Okay. All in favor? Aye. Right, motion carries.
So I owe you an update on this one. If you want to make a motion in second, and I'll be able to give you the update.
Okay. Anybody? All right, um, great.
Yeah.
Oh, that is work. I'm sorry, somebody else wanted to say.
Madam Vice President, I would like to make a motion to direct the manager to sign a professional services agreement with Hoffman's Boarding Kinnels to serve as the borough's dog law enforcement officer for the 2024, 2025 year period at a rate of $165 per month plus charges per service request.
So after last week's meeting where this was discussed, you asked me to look into alternatives and see what else was out there, reach out to Hoffman's and do other kinds of things. And I was hoping to have a memo done, and I haven't, but I'm prepared, but there's a couple of things I just wanted to confirm from the entities themselves. The long and short of it is Hoffman's is an inspected license, you know, and all the things they do, what they need to do. They don't quickly at all ever put down dogs because they don't make any money putting down dogs. They need families to come get those dogs because that's where they get money. It costs them money to take care of dogs. They get paid if dogs get found. Since they've been doing the borough, they have records back to 2015, there've been two dogs that have been picked up in our borough. And one of them was actually a dog from another community. I don't, I guess dogs don't know municipal boundaries, and so sometimes that happens.
Often like deer.
When that occurs, if they get to contract, I have an agreement with them that they would tell us. We would promote on Facebook that an animal has been found. We won't tell people. We want people to tell us what that animal is. We're not looking to We want people to tell us what that animal is. We're not looking to be an adoption service.
Yeah.
So, but German Shepherd is found, and somebody says they lost a bootle. Sorry, we we're we're, we'll work with them on that, and they seem to be amenable to that. I did speak with the state's, uh, dog ward, and Allegheny County actually has a dog ward, and they're they're in the Department of Agriculture. Um, they confirmed that they they do what they need to do with inspections. But they also said something that I've been able to verify as well, which is they're one of the few who actually will prosecute when animals behave badly or owners of animals behave badly. Uh, that actually happened to us as a resident of Greensburg. Our dog was mauled by a neighborhood dog who had actually attacked another dog, and Hoffman sampled every aspect of going to the magistrate and handling that. I've been told by neighboring communities who who are using, um, I'm not sure if Sables is the right name, Donovan Keesport, they will not do that. Uh, uh, and and it's frustrating because a lot of local police aren't able to, they don't have the right certifications or are too busy to go after those because of the 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 paperwork and efforts involved of getting someone to the magistrate to take care of this, so. There's a group in the South Hills that won't take on another customer. Monroeville does get pit caring, but won't take on another customer. In fact, they would like to kind of see if they can just keep it to themselves and not be able to pit caring. The long and short of it is Hoffman's is the only game in town who will actually take us on or keep doing us, and and will go to court if we need that to happen. That's that's quite a good thing to happen. That they, like everybody else who wants to run a business successfully, have responded over the years to public pressure and do everything they can to not euthanize any animals. In fact, they do even transfer animals to other shelters if they've kind of got to that point. Remember, it costs them money to euthanize, so if they can put it to a shelter after all the days have been exhausted to try to get the dog found or its family, that's a loss to them to give it to another shelter because at that point, if the dog's found, they're out of the loop. Um, uh, maybe that's helpful. If you're concerned, we can certainly wait till November to decide this, but I I think you're not gonna find another alternative who will take us on, A, but B, I think be proactive when it comes to enforcing the law if necessary. We're a small community and we've not really used their services a lot or need to use their services a lot over time.
I have a question.
All right, what?
Um, you said since twenty.
Time out. The motion's not seconded yet, so before we have any additional discussion, Alex was giving background. I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, well, you said since twenty fifteen, they've got two dog?
Yeah, there are two dogs. That's, yeah, that, these would be dogs that are strays, that they would be requested to be picking up in our communities. Uh, it's not a thing that happens a lot.
Do we need the service?
You're required to have a dog officer named.
Right, that's a state law, right?
Yeah.
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 Then you had a question?
Yeah, so if they pick up a dog, they inform us, we do all our social media. How much time, I know when we talked about this last week, there was this forty-eight hour.
Yeah, that's, that's their legal requirement, but again, just talking to them, there there's no benefit to quickly do that because that's just payout, and then they lose the opportunity to get paid from. And so for their business moment of work, they want the dogs to be found, and they they're they're fine. But what works them is everybody in the world begins to try to get the dog without it actually being their dog. Remember, uh, Orphan Annie?
Yes.
Right, everybody wanted to be the parents because there was a, you know, but that's not how they want to work. They're not in that world. But they do want the real owner if they can, you know.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I I would just say, you know, it it sounds like they're doing things the right way, um, you know, which is good. I appreciate you doing all that background research and information for us, Alex.
Thank you.
Um, you know, I think as long as they're gonna be a willing partner that, you know, to let us know so that we can inform community members, you know, where where they're at, what the hours are, all that good stuff, which it sounds like they are, and and too, so we can promote if there are lost dogs, and there's all types of Facebook pages, and I see the pizza place, Mama Meatballs down in, you know, uh, Wilkinsburg there, or Wilkins Township, excuse me, you know, they're they're always posting like, hey, you know, somebody, one of the neighbors found a dog and pulls about it, and they're, you know, putting pictures up like, it's community effort, and and that's great.
Yeah, I feel like wouldn't be able to give a good number, but I bet you a lot of dogs that are lost are found that way.
Yep, right.
The neighbor, right, and chasing the dog down and holding it for a day or two until they can make that connection.
The beauty of social media.
Yes, yes.
But but understanding that we also need in case there is somebody that abandons their property, you know, with an animal, or there's an aggressive animal, it has to be taken out of a property, you know, that's abandoned, we have to have that and and, you know, to protect the community as well, so.
Right.
It sounds like the right path forward.
Have somebody to call if there is a problem, you know, start looking around them. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Alex.
All right, are are we, are we? Gavin, you want to say that first?
Well, I think you, they also were amenable to signing, Gavin has had mentioned that we would have an addendum to the agreement, and they said. And I think that was specifically related to insurance coverages.
Yeah.
And then the vacation.
Perfect.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. No? Okay, motion carries.
Thanks, Alex.
Yes, thank you for all of that, Alex. That's great. Okay, number nine.
So I did receive the text from council, if we want to be able to meet for executive session.
Yeah.
Okay.
Adjourn for a little bit.
Yes.
Assess is the right word, and then come back after.
Should we finish nine first?
That is nine.
That's regarding number nine.
Yeah, all right, okay. I, we're going to adjourn for an executive recess for an executive session. We'll meet back as soon as we can.
All right, see you later.
How's when you boot yourself all phases?
(laughing)
So you're unmuted and live.
Well, we're convening, we're meeting, following an executive committee discussion on staffing. And if you have an agenda in front of you, we are not going to be acting on number nine. So, we're discussion items. Our engineers report.
My engineer's report was submitted, it's in the packet. No major updates to provide other than if you do see, there will be your lining contractor, next station contractor expected to be in the municipality this week, so don't see them around.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Alex?
No, nothing additional, other than you have printed out budgets and updated PowerPoints related to that. I think things are pretty self-evident in there, but look forward to meeting with you all again like we did last month.
Thank you, it's been very, very helpful, appreciate that very much. We have our report from our assistant managers to know this evening, or not?
Yes, sure.
Okay, Michelle, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Hi, thank you Vice President. Nothing outside of what I presented in the binder. And just to reiterate what Alex said, we have two additional open house dates that we provided for council. Not next week, but the following week. So just let us know what times you know ahead of time, if you're able to attend, and when you would like to attend, so we can kind of schedule that appropriately.
That's wonderful, thank you very much, we appreciate that opportunity.
I think the infrastructure committee is going to be coming in. I sent that time over to Alex, so hopefully he'll let you know. And we're all, I'm going to come in together and sit to go over kind of capital and five-year planning and.
Yeah, that was the 25th.
Twenty-fifth, that's one. And I think we've allowed enough time now, that if you as individuals still want to come in, go ahead and circle in the time. I think it's good as a community to kind of be able to do that. Thank you.
That's fair.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you, Michelle. How about our public service director is actually on this evening?
She's there, but I think I tried to promote her up here, but she generally likes to stay.
Okay, well, we certainly enjoy reading her report in our packet, and if she's not able to join us now, we appreciate her work. Okay, now what about, is Ralph on for fire?
You're good, Ralph.
Hey, Ralph.
Thank you, Vice President. Yeah, the only thing I have to report tonight is, we had a busy month last month. We had fifty-one calls total for the month. We're at three hundred and eighty-five calls for the year. Under Fire Department, they're keeping us pretty busy. Under Public Works, going into leaf season, lots of leaves are going to start falling soon. Just reminding residents, please do not wreck your leaves to the street. Please bag all your leaves and put them to the curb for the garbage men. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that reminder, Ralph. It's important, we got to do that every year. Okay, thank you for the report, we appreciate it, and it is in our packet, so we'll have it permanently. Let's see, we have, we got a report from Wilkinsburg Penn Joint Water Authority that everybody, everybody heard of that.
We do, I wanted to highlight. Chief's online as well, too.
Oh, James is online, okay.
No, no, Chief, Chief Accrily.
Oh, Chief, okay.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I understood. Chief Accrily, would you like?
Sorry, Diane, I wanted to mention on the Wilkins Penn, because you brought it up. So, there is a couple of things to take a look at in there. There was two remaining lit lines in the borough. We're down to one now, they did the project, so one thing completed, we have one left. Compared to many other communities, we're way ahead, so that's good. The other thing is that is important, I think, is the new systems for automated billing have been implemented and rolled out. I know there was some little bit of a trying time that happened with that. Just so everyone's aware, the water authority, you know, decided to work with the new vendor to make that happen, to get better service. When they said, told their old vendor, we're going to be moving to new vendor in six months, you know, just so you're aware. The old vendor up and said, you know, okay, great, we're not going to serve you tomorrow. They basically canceled the contract without notice. So that was part of the interruption that, you know, folks had to experience unfortunately. You know, but at the end of the day, that wasn't necessarily the water authority's fault, that was a bad sub-vendor, and hopefully moving forward, we won't have those.
Great. Anybody have any questions or comments about that? No? Okay. So, sort of quick, the council of governments, I was unable to make that meeting, so you want to let people know what happened?
Sure, so the, the meeting actually, we didn't have a quorum, because the regionalization of police is going on for a couple of member communities, and they had a, you know, conflict at that meeting. There was some good discussion, though. The one thing I did want to highlight is up, on the eighteenth at five-thirty, for fire officials, publicly elected officials, is the fire meeting. That's going to be happening at the Penn Hills Municipal Building at five-thirty on the eighteenth. So that has been sent out as well, the email, it's also in the packet, but hopefully the other elected officials should be able to attend, and that's going to be multi, multi-municipal, that, you know, other folks are going to be there. And we'll be discussing, you know, what kind of regional fire options look like, and how do we start to address this need, you know, that the volunteer organizations, you know, are just not seeing the same level of volunteers.
Okay, okay, that's the news. Okay, do we have any report from the Woodland Hills School District this evening?
Nothing additional than what I reported.
Okay, fine, thank you, Brooke. And how about the C.C. Miller Library?
In your, I think in your packet, you provided funding requests, where they attempt to give some comparables for you to consider.
Yeah, yeah.
What happened to Chief Accrily? I don't know anything, definitely, but maybe try, I don't know.
Well, there's already a number that we proposed, which is slightly more than we've given, but less than what they're asking.
Okay.
And less directed by council, the number we have in your draft will change.
Okay, fine. We'll maybe take the recommendation from the finance committee on that next month?
Yeah, that's fine, okay, that's evident, that's fine.
All right, okay, council committee report.
The chief is on.
So I read?
The chief is on. Chief Accrily is on.
Oh, he's on, okay. Chief Accrily, would you like to say something to us this evening?
I know, I have nothing additional, Madam President, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, management and government. We need to meet.
Yes, to deal with a number of issues. Yes.
And we do not have a report for this month, okay? Finance.
As you all know, it is, we're meaty been finance season right now. Lots of things happening, tax working really hard. We have been doing, you know, they've been doing the draft budgets, meetings. Things are going as planned in regards to finance. I guess I could also, anything else that you talk about finance?
Numbers working through again?
Yeah, working through it. Since I'm talking, I could just talk about communication, too. I don't know if everybody has seen the amazing videos that have been posted everywhere. They're amazing, that pyramid, that project. It's wonderful, I think it's a great addition when people, you know, go online and they search like Churchill Borough, they see that, they get more information about our borough. I shared it on all my medias, and I had lots of comments from friends, like, oh my gosh, your community looks so cute, it's wonderful. Like, I see you and your kids, I make a little kind of appearance, you know?
Of course you did.
And everybody's like, oh my gosh, it's adorable, I didn't realize like how cute and homey it was, so those are the comments I, yes. Those are the comments I got from friends and family, so that was really nice. I think the videos are a great addition, too.
I think it makes us really proud of our community.
Yes, really, yeah. Even when I was riding around with my videographer, she lives in Oakmont, she said, oh my God,
God, I cannot believe how beautiful this borough is, you know, as we were driving them around everywhere.
It is gorgeous.
And it's a very promotional tool for us, so.
It is, so.
Well, now, thanks to you, everyone knows how beautiful they are. Yes, we're very well, yes, yeah, so.
Okay, that's exciting. Just pushing out social media things, talking about those, the reports and the binder. Anybody have a question?
I think there's one.
One newsletter's coming out, yes, newsletter's coming out.
Yeah, so, okay, yes. Public Safety, we're meeting tomorrow morning. The, you know, the big, the big issue is as far as the police is concerned. We're going to be discussing the opening of the new juvenile detention center in Allegheny County.
The adult fight over?
I'm sorry?
The adult fight over?
We're seeing, yes.
The big, the big project.
So, that's a big issue for us to discuss, it's a big issue for the entire county. But also, the major issue is, is two-fold. One is attracting new recruits, which again is a huge problem all over the country, but we have our borough here to focus on, and our issue is here. So that's another big part of the conversation tomorrow. And, you know, in fire, we know that we're also losing, you know, more and more firefighters and fewer and fewer volunteers. So that's another thing that our committee is going to be looking at. There is a, a report from public safety regarding the creation of a new position that would help in public safety in two areas. Our committee submitted that for consideration. And we'll be discussing that with everybody, including finance. All right? Okay, then communication, climate action. Not a lot, from what I did last week, our interns working on our climate action. Five-year plan, a couple of things, just a reminder to everybody out there, October fourteenth. This is citywide, City of Pittsburgh, it's a plastic bag van goes into a fatness. It doesn't affect us right here, but it does if you're shopping outside, you know, anywhere really. Yes, in the City of Pittsburgh, it's not Allegheny County, City of Pittsburgh. And retailers still have till the end of the year to get rid of all the plastic bags, but, you know, this, and they will be charging ten, I believe it's ten cents a paper bag, so it's just something to keep in mind if, let's say, there's Royal Hill, and there's going to be a giant eagle there, or whatever, bring reusable bags. They're very inexpensive, and I think it's a great way, pardon me? Well, we have some, we still have leftover reusable bags from Navy Day, so.
We were hoping we'd give those out when representative was here.
Right, okay, okay. Well, it's, it will help our environment, yes, in the short and long run. But that's just a reminder, it goes into effect October fourteenth. Also, October fourteenth, Mayor Gamret, isn't, I believe the Allegheny Trust is doing tree planting?
Allegheny Land Trust, yes.
Allegheny Land Trust is doing tree planting on October fourteenth, from nine to noon.
Nine AM to noon. I'm not sure, I think you have to register.
You do have to register.
I don't know if you could just show up, and the link came, Alex sent it to me.
Yeah, which came from Ken, from Kateville, yeah.
Where else, you know, if any residents wanted it, or, you know, garden club people wanted to do that. I would assume you probably just show up, because I'm thinking, like, why, there is a registration form.
Yes, I think that's true.
And I'll do a double duty that day, because that's from nine AM to noon, and also on October fourteenth, I don't want to cut it to you, but it's trunk or treat.
Trunk or treat, Woodland Hills, at two o'clock.
Last one started noon there, well, it started two to four, but they want the people there at noon.
Right, so you can go plant trees, prepare some lunch, and then you want to take your kids to trunk or treat. Very fun, there you go. The Ad-Hoc Dear Committee submitted an article to the newsletter, and that will be coming out soon. Is there anything on ad hoc education in school district, Brooke?
Nothing additional outside of what was reported last week.
Okay, fine, thank you. And zoning update, Alex? Yeah? Okay, and the ad hoc place space. Now, okay, great, all right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
October twenty-eighth is National Responders' Day, so make a point to thank all the responders.
Yeah, October what?
October twenty-eighth, Saturday, October twenty-eighth. I mean, we should be thanking them every day, but all our responders who work so diligently to keep us safe. That's awesome, thank you, appreciate that.
Also, you know, wanted to mention in the mayor's report, we did have a new car. It's a Dodge Durango. I believe it was thrown blind on Monday, last Monday. It's striped, it's downstairs, I haven't seen it yet, but we want to get a couple pictures of it, you know, get out on our social media. The chief can tell a little bit more about that. I'm assuming it's not part of the plan.
Hopefully it's not part of the plan.
No, I don't think we're going to reuse that.
That did mention about the Allegheny Land Trust. I kind of threw in real quick the trunk or treat, also that. And as always, everybody knows, I'm in the Rotary, and I kind of pushed that. We're having our Rainbow Kitchen is, you know, wearing coat drying. So if you have any old coats lying around, you think are still wearable, or like to donate, you can get them, get them to me before October twelve.
Kids' coats, too?
Kids' coats, air anyway, and coats.
I have so many coats.
And one more thing, I just, I wanted to probably thank Dan Zidell, for his time that he's spent on the zoning board each step. I read the letter.
Yeah, he's going to not seek reappointment to the planning commission. His term ends December thirty-first, so. It's part of the discussion, we'll be out about reappointments. There is something also in the newsletter about people were seeking to volunteer in those various, you know, committees. Yeah, Dan had served on the zoning hearing board for a number of years. And has lived in the community for the last like fifty years, so.
Right.
Good guy.
And there's still a little bit of time left to sign up for the Rotary Uncork, which is the wine tasting and dinner, and the lamp lighter on November third. And if you can't make it that day, if you'd like to, you know, somehow support us by making a donation, to sponsor something, small donation, everything counts. Then all those bad acts to the community, we will keep their money back. So that's coming.
Okay, thank you. And you all?
And that's.
Okay, and when else?
Just one more. I do want to thank council for allowing David to come in here.
Of course.
I think that's something we could kind of try to continue to do throughout here.
Highlight our residents.
I mean, just as a little side thing, I just found out everybody, not everybody, but most of us know Tom Varellis. And I'm talking to him the other day, he was instrumental in designing the architecture at Point Bay Park.
Yeah.
So that's, it was the kind of residents that live in our park, obviously, we don't know if they do.
He was also involved in the architect, the landscape architecture for the Visual West State House.
Wasn't he visual, that's what I thought, too.
So there are people, you know, as we come online, somehow through communications, if we could send out a little filler, like, if somebody knows him sometime, that we could, you know, highlight them, do the same thing, have them come in. Do a little proclamation and.
Absolutely, that's good.
Work some cake in there somehow.
Okay.
Biscuit.
Now, anyone else?
No, no, thank you.
All right, I'll have a pen and a brush and adjourn.
So, Lou?
Second. Second.
I call the favor. I oppose. That's it.
Thank you, guys. Bye, all.
Thank you.
Bye, bro.
Bye. Good night.